Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 15th zoning board hearing. We have some general business from the minutes of the July 11th meeting. Members present at that meeting, so that board members are aware, myself, Mark Casalua, John Dagnes, and Chris Burns are present with that. I will take a motion to approve the minutes as they have been written.
Motion.
Motion by John. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. The...
George Solomon.
Why don't you come on up to the front, please? That's your situation. Melissa's going to pass out the registration. I don't know if everybody signed that yet that are going to be in the room who would like to speak. Why don't you pull that microphone close to you for me, please? Is this your first time through this procedure?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So what I'll do is, I've got a couple of minutes here before I can run live with this. Oh, waving to my grandson. My grandson's watching me.
The what?
My grandson. Okay. I will read the notice, and then we can effectively open up the hearing. Okay, this is on the application of George Solomon. Is that the correct way I...
Correct.
Okay. 181 Congress Street, Milford, for a special permit and/or variance relief is necessary from or under the applicable provisions of the zoning bylaw in relation to a parcel of land located at northerly side of Congress Street, known and numbered as 181 Congress Street, and shown on assessment sheet 26 as lot 26. The zoning relief is sought in order to permit the construction of a 24-foot by 30-foot detached garage on the subject property. Copies of all these petitions and diagrams of the proposals as it relates are on file, of course, with the town clerk, and are available for inspection. Anybody that's here in this meeting tonight, just as a point of information, any questions you may have, please address it to the board, the chairman, first, and that way they will try and attest any answers or any comments that you may have. Okay. So with that, on the application, the application is indicating that they're looking to build a detached garage. Let me get this plan out. Do you guys have smaller copies?
Yeah.
I have a small copy here if you would like to see it. Do you have one? Okay, great. This is dated. See, it's dated. Okay. All right, this is on the proposal for a 30-by-24-foot detached garage concerning some of the questions that was asked of the applicant. Explain the reasons you assert that the special permit is sought in harmony with the general purpose in the town's zoning bylaw. The applicant states that the proposed detached garage meets all zoning requirements and building coverage requirements. The applicant's indicating there be no increased traffic. Concerning the use of the premises will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. The applicant states that yes, the proposed use of the premises will not cause harm. So therefore, this was heard through the planning board. And the planning board on 86 recommended a favorable recommendation over to the ZVA. Town meeting planner letter indicates, excuse me, that the application requests a special permit to allow for the construction of a detached garage on the subject property. The property consists of one single-family dwelling on 22,180 square foot of land, locked land. Specifically, the proposal is to construct a 24-foot-by-30-foot detached two-car garage on the property. The structure will meet the side and rear setback requirements under the bylaw. The special permit is required due to the nonconforming nature of the property, as it has no frontage. Access to the property is provided by a 20-foot right-of-way over map 26, block 0, lot 27A on Congress Street, and the attached 81P plan is enclosed. Therefore, they recommend a favorable report be sent off to the ZVA. With that, this plan, there's no date on the plan? Am I missing something? It's stamped by a surveyor, but I don't know how old it is. Is there a date on this?
4/13.
4/13/24. So before we get into the board discussions and into the public discussions, give us an idea of what you're really trying to do.
So I'm trying to build a garage. What am I concerned? Like you got a jet ski and boat that I would like to put him in there?
You mean, what type of equipment?
A jet ski and boat, and then I have a trailer that I would like to store him in there.
Okay, because the zoning bylaw does allow that one commercial vehicle up to 1.5 ton are allowed? Other than that, you can't run a construction business out of that type of stuff?
Yep.
Okay. Is there a reason why it's 30 feet long? The rest is of standard 24 by 24?
Just I'm trying to have more space so I can fit whatever equipments I have.
And as far as the garage is concerned, it's just a single-story garage? There's no walk-up, second floor, or any of that, correct?
No.
That's not going to go well. Yeah, you know, I don't remember this lot being approved. We have a past zoning board member here that probably remembers this, but I certainly don't, because I don't believe I was on the board at that time. But in any event, I want to hear from board members on specifically, and again, we run into this all the time, there's some instances where the garage ends up growing, and it ends up growing to a second level, to a walk-up, to windows, to staircases. So whatever happens tonight, that certainly is not going to be anything of my intention to allow. So saying that right now, what I'll do is I'll turn it over to John, and then, John, if you have some comments, please weigh in.
Where's coming from?
Okay.
Is that a pool?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
In the corner of the property?
Correct.
That is a pool. Okay. The garage would be basically in front of that.
To the right of it?
The side.
Yep.
To the right of it. Right of the pool?
Yes.
Let me remind board members, just so that they're aware, I just wanted to make a couple of quick notes. The side lots in the RB zone, the RB zone is 15,000 square foot lots, so the side lot requirements are 15, the rears are 25, and the front setbacks is 30 from the street. Again, it's 90 feet of frontage in this location, but clearly, this was, I don't even know how this ever got approved way back when, but in any event, it is what it is right now, so it is grandfathered in from that approval way back. So we'll continue on with the questions. John?
I don't have any. Yeah.
Michael, Chris?
Give me a minute, please, David.
I'm good. I'm okay, as long as we don't have, like Chairman Kinsey said, a second floor or anything like that. If it's strictly for boat and storage for cars or whatnot, if that's not in there, then...
There is a two-car under, correct?
There is, but the ceiling is too low. That's the reason we're trying to build a garage.
So you're just trying to get all your toys in the garage?
Exactly.
You just have toys. All right, well, if board members are discussing this...
What did you say you had for equipment?
Just I have boat and trailer that this is mainly what I'm going to store them there.
The frontage trail is...
Yes.
What do you need a boat for? You've got a pool.
I guess it's not enough for him.
How big is the boat? How big is the boat?
This is, I'm going to get it from Virginia. It's 12 feet.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to any of the abudders or residents, whoever's in the meeting room, that may have some comments or questions. Please announce yourself, and you got your microphone there?
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to come forward?
Whatever's going to make you more comfortable, Michael.
I don't want to do anything that's out of order.
Just pull that right up to you. That's all. You can sit there and just pull it right up.
That'll be fine, thank you. I usually like to stand when I speak, but I'll make an exception here, okay? Yeah, well, I forgot...
Were you on the board at that point?
I was getting old. I'm sorry, I was getting old.
Michael, were you on the zoning board at that point?
I was not. That happened prior to my tenure on the board.
Really?
And...
You know when it happened, Mike?
But there was another board member who I served with who was here when that lot was created, cut out of a larger lot. And I, yes, I won't speak for them, but they regretted making that decision. In any case, if I may, continue.
Please.
Okay. This, as you know, and I'm sure I don't need to remind the board members, there are four standards that must be met in order for you to grant relief. The first three I won't dwell on, even though they are not met. Section 1.1, 0.1A, the applicant has not shown that the special permit conforms to the general and specific provisions of the bylaw, which are applicable for the use in which the permit is granted. Number two, the use with the special permit is sought is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw. It absolutely is not in harmony with the purpose and general intent of our bylaw. As you know, our bylaw strenuously discourages these types of lots. In any case, the most important one is section 1.1, 0.1D. The use with the special permit is sought will not cause substantial harm to the neighborhood. It will, or create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the town of Milford. Since this lot was cut out, it has been problematic, to say the least. The lot was intentionally graded from, I want to say northwest to northeast to shed surface water runoff onto abutting properties, and in doing so, has caused major flooding problems to the properties, to the rear of properties that abut this property on Muriel Lane, to the extent that, myself included, our property values of, let's see, four, five, at least five residents have plummeted because of the runoff of this, of surface water from this property.
Michael, are you indicating that the values of the properties have plummeted because of that?
I am, and I have specifics, if you'd like.
I would like that.
Not too many years ago, number five, Muriel Lane, was valued with a value of 500, sold for a mere 245, half of its valuation, because the backyard was continually flooded during moderate-to-heavy rainstorms, all from the subject property. If it was not intentionally done, it wouldn't be so bad, but the property was intentionally regraded to shed the water to those properties. In addition, a pipe, a drain pipe, hidden in the underbrush, was installed to point, for a point runoff of surface water onto the properties down grade. In any case, none of the four requirements for granting relief have been met. So if your board conforms to the bylaw, which I know you will, without violating the bylaw, you cannot approve this application. The flooding and the runoff will only get worse. Keep in mind that the impervious lot coverage is being, if this is allowed, is being increased by 30%. That's three zero, over 30%. So it'll do nothing but increase the runoff to the properties that are now being affected.
I have...
There is a, I'm sorry.
No question.
There is, as you indicated, I believe, there already is a two-car garage on the property, which is typical of the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, most of the homes in the neighborhood have single-car garages. So this property has a plus. Additionally, the improvements to this property have been done indiscriminately, without regard for any kind of bylaws that we may have. As an example, some of the violations, the shed, side yard setback is in violation. The shed, front yard setback is in violation. The house, front yard setback is in violation. The fence, the height and the setback...
Just, Mike, just the front setback, as you know, this was approved. So that was approved previous.
Well...
Just so you know.
Well, no.
So that front setback situation has already been established?
With all due respect, I would beg to differ. When the lot was established, the addition, the significant addition to the house was not there. When the addition was put on, the setback was infringed on, and it is a violation.
So I'm asking for clarity, Mike, because you apparently live in this area along with the neighbors. I was starting to hear about a lot of water issues up there. I got a call from someone else that indicated that there's some water problems up there. So from the plan that I'm seeing, are you saying that front addition never got a permit? A relief permit for some front setback?
What I'm saying is, this is a nonconforming lot, as you know.
Pre-existing nonconforming?
Pre-existing nonconforming. The request is to make it more nonconforming by the addition of a nonconforming garage, by the addition of more impervious lot coverage.
Right, but you mentioned an addition that was not within the front setback. Is that what you said to me?
The addition, if you look at the plan, okay, the addition, which is not clearly indicated here, I don't know, were there any elevations submitted with the...
Well, that's my problem. There's no elevations on here, and I have a problem with that already.
Okay, if you see, can you, if you note where the front setback is to the front corner of the house, it says...
22.5.
22.5, okay? That is an addition, a huge addition with the two-car garage under, okay? That was added long after the lot was approved as a noncon...
Do you know if that was, if there was ever a variance issue for that?
I can't, I don't, there was so much indiscriminate building going on over there, I don't know. But even if it was, it makes the lot more nonconforming, and if you approve this, you will make it even more nonconforming. And I would respectfully say to you that if you approve this, you will make this probably one of the most, if not at least the top five, nonconforming lots in this town. And I'm not sure that you would want that as part of your legacy, notwithstanding the fact that it doesn't...
You have a legacy?
Notwithstanding the fact that it doesn't meet the requirements, it doesn't meet the legal requirements.
Well, I'm going to have a couple of questions with your follow-up with the applicant. How long have you owned this house?
Since 2020.
Been 2020, yes.
Four years, correct. Any changes, yeah, any changes that has happened to the house has been way before we bought that house.
Do you know when this lot got approved?
I do not know.
Could you guess how many years ago? I think it was the 80s.
Yeah, I'm thinking it had to be prior to 1989.
Yeah, I think I saw something in the 80s, mid 80s.
Yeah, and I say that because it was prior to my tenure on the board, and that would have to be prior to 1989. Once again, notwithstanding any kind of approvals for that nonconforming lot, it doesn't comply with any of the four standards that need to be met for you to approve it. It's as simple as that.
Well, the big problem, the big problem I have with the plan is, and again, I'm hearing of issues with water up there, you mentioning a pipe coming out to probably someone's yard. I have issues with that. I believe that, was there some drainage that was recently done up there? Because I know a lot of people have sump pumps up there, correct?
I can't answer that. I know I do not.
You do.
And where are you located?
We're at 179 with the side.
Before them, right?
Yes.
Going towards Congress Street. You're right before them.
What I can attest to is, my neighbors on either side of me routinely get, I don't want to use the flooded, but they get flooded. So they have sump pumps, but their sump pumps are routinely overwhelmed by the amount of water that comes off of this lot.
Do you have a sump pump right now?
We don't.
Are you tied into any drain, street drain over there?
We don't know.
Where's all the water going from yours? Because you've got a lot of impervious material, so you've got a lot of, so where this proposed garage is, is that already asphalt?
It is asphaltous.
Yes, sir.
Not all of it.
Jim Cartell, 179 Congress. During a heavy rainstorm, the area outside of the swimming pool is all asphalt. During a heavy rainstorm, the water runs in a downward direction across my backyard. And during a heavy rainstorm, it looks like I have a stream that runs across the backyard to Mr. Spocky's yard.
In relation to this site, where are you, Michael? You in back?
I am in back two down, so kind of diagonally behind.
There's a couple of issues that I have a problem with on the plan, and it's related to number one, there's absolutely no topographical information on the plan. I can't see any elevations of where anything's going as far as topographically off the site. I believe there's a pool that's not on this plan, correct?
Correct. There is a pool in there, yes.
It's not on the plan?
No. It's right next to where the proposed garage is, to the left.
These are some of the issues that I'm having. He brings up a great point. I'm having an issue with this because there's way too much impervious material on this site that apparently is not properly draining. The elevations and topos that are not on the plan, so I agree with them that there's some issues concerning overtaxing a piece of property that's basically almost landlocked with a 20-foot right-of-way to get in, and then adding another 30-foot-long-by-24-foot detached garage is going to, I think, create even more issues than what's already falling along the outside of the neighbors. The shed clearly is not in compliance. The front setback, I have no idea if there was ever a permit issued for that, because it's certainly outside the proper setbacks. It's certainly not indicated on the plan. Personally, in my opinion, I can't support this. I'll hear from other board members. I think, if anything, and again, this is the applicant's decision, hearing specifically from the abudders that there's already a problem going on with drainage, and the heavy rain we're getting is just going to, is accelerating that more. Two things could occur. First of all, the plan is not, I don't see the plan as a complete plan, has no indication of any pool on the property. That alone is troubling, troubling to me. There's no elevations on the property at all, no topos to determine what the grades are. That's another big issue for me. We've got a frontage situation that clearly is not spelt out. Don't know if there was even a permit issued on that particular addition. So I'm uncomfortable at this time to vote affirmatively on this until there's at least additional information, and that may not change my mind, but I'm in agreement that I can't support this. But, yes, sir.
A little additional information on the pool area. There's a gate, a very wide gate that's opened and has been open for several months, which is in conflict with national laws of safety on pools.
It's supposed to be secure.
And the pool area is not secure. It hasn't been used for years. I don't know if there's water still inside the underground pools.
Majority of it is empty. Majority of it is empty.
But it's not secure.
It's empty?
The majority of it, yes.
Want to use it in the future?
At some point, yes.
Let me ask a quick question. This is just off the top of your head, without the elevations that we obviously need. This garage, big garage, just off the top of your head, is it higher than where your house is now, or lower?
The garage?
Yeah. I know it's not built. Is it going to be...
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's why the topos are here.
You must know.
It's going to be with the same level of the ground, so it won't change. Actually, so the ground there is actually low.
It's lower than your house?
Yeah, like the back of it, I have a picture of it if you'd like to see it.
Okay. But again, he's talking...
So the water is running off your site into the abudders?
So actually, the water is running from the well.
If I may, just one quick...
Our neighbor, there is a well in the ground, 183.
183.
They have a well in there.
Well?
Yes, and I have notes that once I thought there was like a byburst in there, so I went to the neighbor to ask them, and they told me that's our well. So it's not from our property that water...
Interesting.
Yeah, it was draining into our property.
Is that house with the well?
I believe 183, the one next to us.
Should be a record of that, right?
And the water around like...
You have to have a permit to have a well anyway, so that's allowed as a matter of right. Why would the well be spreading water out?
We don't know what's the reason behind the leaking, but the water was leaking into our property with the...
And we noticed that as well, but it doesn't really affect our house where it sits.
It's on your property, so, yeah.
It's actually the line between our property and our neighbor.
Where did you see that water running down?
Right by the fence, all the way down to their house, and we noted that.
Impervious asphalt material, if it's not properly pitched and drained properly, it's going to run into your abudders, because there's so much impervious asphalt on the property. And now, you're going to add even more with this garage. And again, the plan shows nothing concerning elevations. That's the killjoy right there for me. There's some issues concerning, a number of issues at this point, I can't support. Michael, you had a question?
Well, just to your point regarding the shed. The shed may or may not be, I can attest to either way, but it may be of a size that did not require a building permit. However, even if it did not require a building permit, it still had to adhere to setbacks, and it does not.
It's not adhering to setbacks now?
No, it is not, no.
Was the shed or was it there?
It was there.
Is that Alan Nash's house, right? Was this Alan Nash's?
It was Alan, and with all due respect, Alan Nash, he's not here, so I don't want to impugn somebody that's not here, but Alan just did what he wanted up there, and you know, he didn't care. And despite my numerous appeals to zoning enforcement, I just ran into stone walls. Their response was, get a lawyer and take him to court. Well, you know, I'd like, I would have liked to have our zoning enforcement enforce the bylaws, but as you know, and once again, I don't want to impugn anybody that's not here, but zoning enforcement in our town is all but nonexistent. And once again, with all due respect to the zoning department, I hate to say that, because I don't want to impugn somebody who's not here, but you leave me with no choice.
Any other comments, Sean?
In any case, with respect to the pool, as has already been stated, the pool is in violation. The pool may in fact be infringe on the setbacks. There's no enclosed fence.
Adam, me to interrupt you, but we can talk about this until we're blue in the face. They bought this house with everything there, so it's not on them at all.
Well, I disagree. It is on them. They bought it, they either knew or should have known what they were buying. That's the law.
Mike, if you go out and buy a car, a used car, and you take it home three days later and something happens to it, should you have known that there was going to be something wrong with it?
We're not talking about a car here. We're talking about a piece of property.
We're talking about a garage, not the pool, not the shed.
We're not talking about anything that was already there. We're trying to determine this garage. Everything else... Everything else that they have on their property was out of their control.
I understand that, but, not to be redundant, but they either knew or should have known what they were buying. This is not a car, this is a piece of property. When you buy a piece of property, you either make sure that there are no liens, and in addition, make sure.
Mike, was there a water problem there before they bought this property?
Yes.
That's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
Go ahead.
Well, again, I think back to the site plan, I think we need more information, and I would suggest that you ask us for a continuance, so you can get us all the proper information.
Sure, sure. I can get whatever information you need.
Well, the engineer, and again, when you come in to do a special permit, irregardless whether it's a side lot variance, real lot variance, a grandfather piece of property that you're looking to continue to keep the nonconformity and nonconformity, in this case you're increasing the nonconformity, everything should be on the plan. There's no elevations on the plan. The pool should have been on the plan. So if I didn't do a drive-by there tonight, I would have not known by looking at this tonight, it was a pool. The only reason I knew is I could see it when I drove by. That's not on the plan. So you've got elevations, and you've got the pool on the plan. Again, it'll probably cost more money to put this on the plan than should have been put on the plan first, before coming here. So if you'd like a continuance, we can do that.
That would be nice.
It's strictly up to you. Again, I don't know if that'll even change my mind, but I'm just trying to give you, you know, a heads-up what the proper, what the proper information that needs to be on this plan is not on this plan. So I'm considering this as incomplete because the plan is incomplete.
So on the plan, you would like to see the pool and elevations?
All the topo elevations.
Elevations.
All this water's going someplace, and it's being corrected, I'd like to see that corrected, but to put more impervious material on this and increase even more water coming off the site is a problem. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna be getting calls from abutters saying, well, it goes to garage, now we've got more bitumen driveway conque, we've got more asphalt in here, now the rain's coming even further, the pitches aren't right, there's no elevations here. So that engineer's job was to provide all that information so these people wouldn't feel almost scared because now there's a chance even more water's gonna come into their abutting property. And I don't blame them. I don't blame them. If I was in their position, I'd feel the same way. But again, you as the applicant, bringing this through, that's fine, you know, the planning board made their recommendation, that's a different department, but from my perspective, I can't support this in its current state. You can ask for a continuance, we can give you a continuance till next month if you like. Get an attorney, you may want, you can talk to an attorney, but the plan itself is incomplete because it doesn't have all the information on it.
Sure.
Sure.
We'd be happy to add the information needed, which is the pool.
Do you want, do you want to take a continuance?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Absolutely, John.
I'd like to ask the abutters, did you ever approach the previous homeowner of these problems? Yeah? If I may, Mr. Chair, I answer that. I approached the abutts because an elderly lady who lives three doors down from me was in tears, knee-deep in water in her lower level, who came to me. Well, Mr. Scotty, and all due respect, all of this water problems up there, I've lived in this town my whole life. I know numerous neighbors up in that area. There has always been water issues up there. For abutters now to come before this board and say that this one particular property is responsible for the water issues up there, when these people only bought this house four years ago, this should have been addressed with the previous homeowner, with the town. You now as abutters to come here and confront the board and these people saying that their property is responsible for the water issues up there, I definitely can say that is not the case. Mr. Chair, may I respond?
Yes, go ahead.
I had not a drop of water on my property prior to this lot being approved and cut out, not a drop. After this lot.
They didn't do that.
They were not there at the time, but that does not matter. Read the law. I appeal to you, it does not, read the law, read the law. They own the property now, they are responsible. Review the law. Gee, please, review the law.
Definitely disagree with that. They bought the lot, the problem is there before they bought the property, and now to put them in a position where you want them to fix the problem that was there for the last forty years is not, is not right.
Well.
I agree.
Okay, but.
Seriously.
Shall we make it worse now?
Well, we didn't say we're gonna make it worse. We're gonna probably go to a continuance here, but to accuse them of having all these, causing all these water problems is not correct. Where's the builder? Who approved this forty years ago? That's my thing. You want us to hold them responsible? That's just not right.
They are the property owner. They are responsible.
Where was everybody before?
Well, as I indicated earlier, my numerous appeals to the building department, zoning enforcement, town engineers, Stonewall. No, go get a lawyer and sue them. This is when the prior owner.
Well, what we're gonna do is, if you'd like a continuance.
Please.
We'll continue it, we'll continue it for 60 days, but we'd like to put you on the next hearing, which is.
Can we have it in October if possible? Yes, please.
October, it'll be October 10.
Thank you.
I make a motion we approve the continuance.
10-10-24. You're gonna have, you're gonna have to sign this. So there's a motion to continue this until the October 10, 24 hearing. Recommendation would be, of course, that the engineer has the elevation topos on there, and if there are water issues, maybe he should look at seeing if we can get something drained to the street.
Sure.
First of all, if this board even considers this, that would probably be a major requirement because we've gotta try and contain as much on-site water as possible, and with the level of impervious material, there's a percentage of coverage that you cannot go over. We can't go over that. So if that's the case of cutting down the driveways a bit, then, you know, we'll have to do that. But your engineer can do that.
You can slide this forward, and you're not.
Yeah, the garage can actually come forward, yeah.
Or final depth.
Towards the road.
Correct.
And you're not, there's no more.
Way up. Come way up.
Yep. Like you said, you've got frontage is 30 feet, you know.
And in the meantime, I am gonna, I'm gonna look at the previous work that was done on this, including this addition that was put on, and who knows if there was a permit pool for that, but I'd like to dive into that, gives me time to do that as well. So there's a motion to continue this to 10-10. The engineer's got some work to do. If the engineer has any issues concerning this, he should have known all of this stuff should be on the plan, and it's not. The elevations provide what's called an existing condition and then a proposed final elevation condition. That is where you can get all this water off the site and to the drain, street drain. So that's for everybody around you, because if this is just flowing off the site, the garage is gonna make it worse. So if we've got an opportunity to correct something, I'd like to see it corrected. As far as the proposed 30-foot garage, again, I'm not favored to that. Clearly could be pushed way up and eliminate all this asphalt, and it's gonna be a drainage plant in here because I'm concerned about the abutters and the water.
Are we willing to work with them if there's issues drainage? We can install drainage around the garage if that's our issue.
Mr. Chairman, what about what the applicants had mentioned about, they actually approached a neighbor.
With the well.
And asked the neighbor who owned the well if some pipe had burst because there was so much water coming from that well area. Am I correct?
Yes.
Is that still continuing?
It's only when it rains.
You got a picture of it?
I never took a picture of it.
Is it a hand-dug well or something? What type of well?
I didn't, it's showing from the street, like you'll see a little, like a brick thing underground.
Once again, I believe these applicants could put French drains around the whole property.
And get it out to the street.
Yeah, but you know what? I don't think that's gonna alleviate the water problem.
Not flow it.
Not for the people below them.
Right. Well, again, I think the effort on the engineer's part needs to continue. Melissa, will you grab his cell phone information? If they don't mind, I'd like to physically go on the site.
Sure.
I'd like to have an opportunity to walk it, and if, you know, a neighbor, again, I'd rather, rather get a better idea of this. But again, we don't have enough information because we don't have a complete engineered plan. So with that, there's a motion to continue it, so October 10.
I'll second it.
There's a second. All those in favor, proposed, that's unanimous. Melissa, will you do me a favor? Would you take the abutters' names and phone numbers so that they can be notified? Because October 10's a while back, and they're not gonna remember to come back on the 10th, and I'd like them to at least, the neighbors to at least understand that the hearing's gonna be a certain time on the 10th. If you would do me a favor, Michael?
Just one thing, Mr. Chair. If and when you do walk the site, be careful you don't fall in the pool. There is no fence around the pool as required.
There is a fence in there. There was, that was a tree laying, laying on the fence when we bought the house, and it was laying on the power cable as well. We just recently got rid of it, that tree, and it just, the gate is down. I do have my truck most of the time, it's in that area.
You gotta secure that.
Is it an in-ground?
For the safety.
It's in-ground, but it's raised, actually what it is, like it's not like you're gonna walk in and you fall in the pool. You have to like.
There's stairs that you go up the stairs.
You have to go up, plus the pool is covered as well, and as I mentioned, there isn't water in there.
We got a lot of rain, I don't want some small child getting through.
Yeah, definitely. We planned to fix that gate, we're just starting the construction work if we get approval for the garage, and we're going to put a new fence in there and everything, so.
I think you should just fix the gate.
Okay.
If it's temporary, just to, just to secure it, so there's no tragedies.
We'll make sure that you're not gonna fall, sir, for sure.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just so we're clear, it's not just a gate, it has, by law, it has to be a self-closing locking gate, self-closing locking gate.
Well, if the pool's not even functioning, all I'm concerned about right now is security. If the pool's not functioning and it's closed, I just don't want anybody temporarily walking in there. So if we can get that secured and then get the fencing done, that'd be great.
Stray dogs.
Okay, so with that, can you please come over and sign this? This is the continuance. If you print and sign, print below and sign above. Make sure you give Melissa your.
Phone number.
Our administrative administrator, so that we have contact information on you. Email to.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, with that, it's continued until the 10th, October 10, and we will notify, make sure the abutters are notified of that hearing as well. Any other, there's no other business tonight. It's a pleasure.
Motion by John.
A motion by John, is there a second?
Second.
Second by John Dagnes, all those in favor.
All right.
Propose. Thank you, everyone, for joining, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for listening, I appreciate it.